All right, it is the time of the meeting. We'll call our meeting to order. We'll stand and have our invocation and our pledge of allegiance by the Honorable Reverend Johnny Maxgury.
May the Lord bless you, please. Eternal God, our Savior, and our Creator, give the clean mind, Jesus, my heart, my mind, my body. In the name of Jesus Christ, may we all sit together, amen.
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 Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is such a pleasure to see you all here tonight and joining in, watching your county government function. We will move to our agenda. Item number one on our agenda list, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Not any.
Hearing none, is there a motion, we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mrs. Arrowood, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, that motion carries unanimously. Our public appearances, we are very blessed to have Senator Ronnie Cromer with us tonight. Senator, we're always thankful to you and all that you do for Newberry County. So if you want to come up and just tell us anything you want to tell us, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate being invited up. I went back and started trying to go through my notes and it was hard to gather up the notes from the whole year. So I got staff to gather them for me. And I went to my computer and I just said, print out the file. And when I got through, it was almost a ring of paper. I said, oh, my goodness, I ruined all my laser printing equipment or supplies and all the paper and all. So I didn't do that to you. I knew that you folks have got a lot tonight, so I condensed it down immensely. And if you have any questions, I'm going to take leave of you as soon as I finish. I'm getting up at 2:30 in the morning to head to Argentina about six o'clock. So we're going down, taking my grandson and son-in-law to shoot some doves.
How awesome.
There've been a lot of people around Newberry, Ray Harvey, Billy West, Thad Mays, a whole bunch of others that go down there. So we're going to try that. Reverend Scurry, it's good to see you. And I say that instead of councilman because to me, Reverend is a much higher title than councilman. I served in the Senate for a period of about three years with a gentleman, I don't know if you would remember his name, but it was Warren Guzey. Warren Guzey was the coach at Carolina football, coach for a long time. And he got elected senator and I always called him coach. And I told him the same thing, that's a much higher calling than being a senator is. And Councilman Reader and Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman and Madame Arrowood, Council Lady Arrowood, she is my neighbor right across the cove on Lake Murray. I can throw a rock and hit her almost. She probably feels like doing that to me at times. And Buddy and Nick, it's good to see y'all, y'all. I appreciate you allowing me to be here this evening. And Mr. Inglesa, he and I have had a few telephone meetings here in the past couple of months or whatever. Been able to get a few things settled for the county. I just wanted to start out by telling you a couple of things. And I know there's one bill that you were interested in, I'm saving that to the last. And this bill did not pass this year. It passed in the Senate but didn't pass in the House. And that was called the South Carolina Compassionate Care Act. For those who don't know what that is, that was the marijuana, legalizing marijuana. And I know most of the law enforcement folks were opposed to that. But the way we passed that bill, I voted, I didn't vote against it, and I didn't vote for it, I abstained because we wound up with an amendment on it that said it could only be sold through license and legal pharmacy and not these little boxes or shops that you see in Colorado and all these other places. That was number one. So when that happened, I always tried to abstain on anything pharmacy related, so I abstained on that. But I will say that we put in there that there would be no marijuana that you could smoke, no raw form of marijuana. Everything would be in a tablet dosage form, a liquid dosage form. Some people use it to inhale, they get benefits from severe back pain, seizures and all. I have mixed emotions about it. I really, I really didn't want to vote for marijuana if I had voted. But I'll have to tell you that I've seen some cases where it really has helped some folks. I talked to Bill Kennedy and Lou Kennedy, they own Nephron. Some of you might be familiar with Nephron down at I-77 and I-26, a huge company there in Columbia. They're constituents of mine. And they wanted to do research on it and maybe think about putting a, they do a lot of aerosol inhalants that people use for asthma and all that. And they wanted to start making that, but they had to go through doing some research. And they couldn't do research the way marijuana was classified now. So after doing all of my research on the substance and all, I decided that if I voted, I probably would vote for it to try to help those people out and also to allow research in South Carolina. One of the things we put in there, and the only reason I'm telling you folks about this, is we had an amendment that if any county council or any city council wanted to pass an ordinance saying that you did not want it in your county, Mayor Sin said, we don't want it in the city of Newberry, then you had that prerogative to pass an ordinance and not allow it in the county or the city. So we felt like we had it tightened up as tight as we possibly could so we wouldn't have any kinds of abuses with it. Let me move on to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. That was Senate Bill 952. And we passed that to give the Department of Transportation about $454 million to help with some projects that are still pending that we knew it might be a few years, such as making three lanes from Orangeburg all the way to Charleston on I-26. If any of you ever traveled that road, that is an atrocious road. You've got, you've got two lanes of trucks half the time going to the ports in Charleston and you can't get around them. And then they back up and you'll have traffic backed up for a couple of miles. So that's, you see the interstate's being cleared off, they're prepping for that. And we should be able to do that sometime in the next two to three years. The rest of the money, we kept somewhere around two and a half million, excuse me, two and a half billion, I believe it was, in reserves so that we could figure out what we needed to use it for. We've got until like 2026 to spend that money. We did distribute $900,000 to the Rural Infrastructure Authority. So that could benefit the counties and the cities in rural areas primarily. $900 million, you know, that's almost a billion with a B. So that could do a lot of good for the state of South Carolina with sewage, maybe also doing some small roads and some developments for the county. But that was a pretty big deal as far as I was concerned. And we also gave $400 million to the Office of Regulatory Staff, the ORS. And that was for broadband, creating more broadband in South Carolina. And it also enabled people like the Co-op that already has broadband and has done an excellent job of getting it out. They'll have to, Councilman Shealy knows that I toot their horn quite a bit. They've helped out a lot in the county. But with this $400 million, we'll be able to get broadband to a lot of the poorer areas of South Carolina that were unable to have internet when we had COVID and the kids were at home and they couldn't, they'd have to dial in and it'd be so slow. So I'm hoping that's going to help us out in the future with all of our broadband needs in South Carolina. We passed House Bill 4919, that was the Elections, New Elections Law. And I'm sure a lot of you have seen on the internet and also the news where some states that we've got national people that are just belittling those states that pass the election laws about how crude they are and how much they're keeping people from voting. Well, let me tell you that in South Carolina, we passed it. And in the House, we had 141 votes to zero. In the Senate, we had like 42 votes to zero. You don't ever pass a bill in both houses unanimously. So that bill passed unanimously. That meant every Democrat, every Republican, every female, every male, every black, every white, all voted for it. So everybody was in agreement with it. We, we in South Carolina term ourselves as being a lot more collegial than they are in Washington DC. We pretty much get together and try to work things out when we're in disagreement. Now, sometimes we just come to an impasse and we're going to have to fight each other on it. But the majority of the time, we'll figure out a way that we can come to a compromise that will work for both sides. I'll tell you, just right before the session ended, I was getting ready to go out to lunch. We had a little break. And I wound up going out with Senator Dick Harpootlian, Senator Brad Hutto, who is a minority caucus leader from Orangeburg, and Senator Nikki Sussler. And I know a lot of people looked and wanted to know what one Republican was doing with three Democrats, but we're all friends there. And we'll fuss and cuss at one another every once in a while, but we're all friends and we get by that. But I just wanted to let you know that that passed. And if you ever hear anything from anybody on it, you can let them know that it passed unanimously in both houses. I had a couple items I wanted to talk to you about that were in the budget, that we included in the budget. $12 million to fully fund the local government fund. $10 million for the Rural County Stabilization Fund. And I gotta, I gotta admit to you, I don't remember exactly what that stabilization money was for, but y'all got part of it. And I'm sure by now, maybe you know, Chris, what all that can be used for here in the county. We also had $2 million to protect the equipment for all the statewide radio systems for the first responders. We wanted to make sure that their ability to intercommunicate between the different departments will still be there. So we felt like giving them a right good bit of money. I had a lady call me up not long ago, actually she sent me an email, said, I'm never going to vote for you again. You wouldn't, you didn't think enough of us teachers that put money in the state budget for teachers' raises. I had to say, you're sadly mistaken there. We put a quarter of a billion dollars in the whole state education fund. That was not all the money, that was just part of the money. But what happened was the county district, not counties, but the district superintendents, education superintendents had been asking us for years, would y'all please give us flexibility? Sometimes we won't need to spend this much money on this particular program or we won't need to spend this much money, but we come up with a shortfall on another program. So would you please give us the flexibility to spend that money as we see fit? So we basically got rid of EIA and EFA and I used to say, EIAO, McDonald had a farm because it took so long for me to try to understand all those acronyms. But we did that for the district superintendents, gave them that $240 million. We also raised the entry level teacher from 36,000 to 38,000 and we paid for that in addition to the $240 million. The reason we left it up to the district superintendents to give those raises out as they saw fit was because in the past, when the state says, we're giving a 5% raise to the teachers, that was 5% to everybody. It didn't matter if it could be your top teacher in the district, we'd get 5%. The one that held everybody back at the bottom, we'd get 5%. So the district superintendents know their people a lot better. And we felt like we would leave that up to them to use that money to give raises out as they saw fit. We also gave a 3% across-the-board pay raise for state employees. And we put in about $102 million. Every year, our insurance goes up. I think y'all have state insurance and you know, you're familiar with that. It goes up every year. And dental insurance and health insurance both. So we put $102 million in this so we wouldn't have to increase our state employees' insurance premium by any means. We also put $10 million in non-recurring grant funds for the Division of Aeronautics in case Newberry County or any of the other airports in the counties needed to do some work on their airports. That would give them enough money that they can go to the federal government if you've got a shovel-ready project to get a grant from the federal government because you always have to match it with a local match. And while I'm on that, let me just say, whatever you do, don't get rid of Newberry Airport. I don't fly anymore, I haven't flown in 10 years, I want to get back into it. But not for personal reasons, but all of the industry that you have coming in. I remember when, what was the place down in Prosperity, I forget their name, it wasn't Kaiserslautern, it was something else. But they had a Mitsubishi airplane that they flew in every time they came to check on the plant down in Prosperity and they used the Newberry Airport. So it is very beneficial to be able to tell whether it be Samsung or whoever. We've got a local airport here that can maybe handle your small jet if you want to fly in and fly out. So I think that really does help y'all. The County Transportation Acceleration Fund received $250 million from non-recurring funds. And also, let's see, I think that's it. You folks probably know that CTC got some more money. I think it was like $3.5 million one-time funds that we sent back to Newberry County. We normally get about $2.5 million each year, that's a normal appropriation. But this year, you got that plus the $3.5 million. And I think Mr. Inglesa can tell you that we worked out a deal with the CTC to try to hip you out somewhat on the funding out at Samsung with the road that goes all the way through and the repaving of the road. So some of that money's going to be used for that purpose. And last but not least is, I want to go to S-233. That was, I got a call from Les about two weeks ago. And he wanted to know about the bill that we passed. He said, you know, you got an agricultural exemption on that. I had to go back and look at it, but when I did, it refreshed my memory. A lot of the counties in the state charged a service fee or user fee. And I don't, I think y'all may be discussing a little bit of that now. But some of these counties had done it and they'd been sued. And they were going to have to come out of pocket with a lot of money. So the County Governmental Association came to the legislature and asked us to please pass a bill to allow that so that these people would not be on the hook for a fantastic amount of money in a lawsuit. And so we agreed, we agreed reluctantly. And I can tell you, one of the reasons they got it passed was they put on the agriculture exemption. And I talked with Vice Chairman Hip about that. But what that does basically is all farm buildings and agricultural structures that are owned by a producer in this state use to house livestock, poultry crops, farm equipment or farm supplies, would be, whether it be farm machinery or whatever, would be exempt from the taxes. And also, I think we passed for the taxes on manufacturing and industry to be lowered from 10% to 6%. Y'all familiar with that? You know, we did, we did put in that bill that all of that money would be reimbursed to the counties by the state. Y'all familiar with that?
Yes.
I was not.
I read it, yes.
I was not familiar with all of that.
Yeah, well, so you're not on the hook for that decrease. Now, the agriculture exemption, let me say, when that came up, you would not have been able to pass that bill on the user fee or service fee, whatever you want to call it, without some sort of a carrot out there. I call those kinds of amendments, it is one that you can't not vote for. I'll give you an example. About 15, 18 years ago, I hadn't been in the Senate very long. And Brad Hutto, who is a genius, and he is now the minority caucus leader, we had a bill that we were trying to pass that would allow the Ten Commandments to be posted in the schools. Brad put an amendment on that bill that said that we would allow the Lord's Prayer in the school. Well, the Lord's Prayer had already been designated by the Supreme Court as not being constitutional. So how many people could vote against putting the Lord's Prayer in the school? And I can tell you, I had to vote for the amendment even though it was a bill killer. And I voted for it. One of our guys who felt like he was doing the right thing voted against it in the next election. That's all he heard from his opponent was, can you believe that Senator so-and-so voted against the Lord's Prayer in the schools? So when it comes to farm buildings, I don't mind telling you, it's kind of like hot dogs, apple pie, mom, Chevrolet, kids and all. It's something you just can't vote against. And that's, that bill would have never passed had it not been for that amendment in there. So I just wanted to let y'all know that. And that's pretty much all I had because that took up enough of your time. Is there anything that you'd like to ask me? If I can't get you to answer tonight, I'll get you to answer in a week when I get back. You can maybe give anything else that you think of tonight to Chris and he can email me and we'll certainly look it up, try to get you an answer on it. But anything I can answer tonight.
Any questions for anyone?
I appreciate the opportunity to be here and I've enjoyed working with Mr. Inglesa over the last month or so and look forward to working with you folks again in the future too.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for taking your time to come.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Hope you kill lots of doves.
Have fun.
All right, next, under public appearances, we have Charter Spectrum. And I'm going to try names, if I mess them up, just look over me. But Richard Lupino and Joe Prater?
Yes, sir, that's perfect.
All right.
Tough act to follow in this interview. Mr. Chairman, thanks for having us. We're grateful to be here and we're grateful to bring our services here to the county. We wanted to come and give a quick update on our ARDOF throughout the county. For those who may not be familiar, this was a program through the FCC. It stands for the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. We were awarded a significant amount of area in the county. We've since made some adjustments that we wanted to come and talk to you guys about tonight. So this is a snapshot right here. This is again, the original award that was given. It was 21 census block groups across the county which were considered unserved in the eyes of the FCC at that time for a little over 4,800 locations. And luckily for the county, during the state's last state broadband grant program, there were some awards made in the northern area around our ARDOF that we're now making, have made some adjustments to as well. That impacted three of those census block groups up there, which was roughly 651 FCC locations. Keep in mind, FCC locations is based on the FCC's data. It's not necessarily local address data. It's, to their knowledge, the number of locations within those CBGs. And this is a look at what we ended up adjusting. Again, based on the northern area, there was some state funding that's going to provide some service up there. The other areas of the county, we charter and as long, as well as the FCC had identified that there was actually some already gig providers in those areas. I believe in the county, it was West Carolina was already providing gig service in a lot of those areas. So we have since given that back to the FCC, which then remains those green areas out in the west and then a little bit down in the south. So again, we dropped 14 of those census block groups, which was about 4,200. However, we do still have the seven that are in green up there, which is about 670 locations. And here's a snapshot, this is a beautiful map the county put together that actually shows those remaining census block groups kind of with the street level view that gives you a better idea of where they are. So this is what's left and this is what we plan to build. This is where we'll bring our fiber-to-the-premise infrastructure that'll have gig capability. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Rich Lupino. He's our Senior Director of Construction. And he can give you a little more update on more of the technical and construction side of these areas.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, council members, for having us. So just, I really don't have a lot to add from what Joe had mentioned. Again, we had areas that we originally were building into that was a lot larger than what we are left with now. But with some state grant funding that had come in after we had bid on the ARDOF FCC areas, we decided that it was best use of the funds that we were allocated to give up those areas since there was going to be other providers building in it. Because really, the purpose was to build out to all the unserved areas. And to have two providers building in one area, it would give us better use of our workforce to focus in the areas that were unserved and let the other providers that were building in the areas that they had bid on build in those areas so that we weren't having duplicate funding, duplicate companies building in the same areas. So this way, more of the county members and residents could have, you know, broadband in their areas altogether. So we are planning on starting construction probably middle to the end of next year. We're still in our engineering and planning phase. Once we get through with that, the construction portion for the 600 and some odd locations that we have should not take very long to get done, should only be a couple of months to get that built completed. So hopefully, we could have this either built by the end of next year or early into 2024. And I know there's a lot of folks that would like it sooner. The issue with that is, you know, we're building all over South Carolina. We're providing service to about 80,000 unserved homes in the state of South Carolina, which is a great thing. I'm really excited to be part of this because every place that we're building, people constantly are coming out of their homes and saying, thank God that you're here and we're finally getting internet. Because as the Senator had alluded to, you know, there were folks during the pandemic that just could not do telemedicine, couldn't do work from home, couldn't do the homeschooling and things like that. So it's a great program that the FCC, you know, provided funding for us. And, you know, we're committed to getting this built as quickly as possible. That schedule for middle of next year or end of next year into 2024 could change. Everything is fluid depending on workforce, materials, things like that. And, you know, we're definitely committed to getting it done as quickly as possible. And if we can accelerate that schedule, we certainly will. Any questions for Joe or myself, from any of the council members?
You said, basically said that y'all dropped a certain number?
We did. When the FCC originally awarded charter with that 4,000 or so, yeah, and Joe, that'll be good, show that. So originally, we were awarded all of those areas. But then, as Joe said, there was one area, which is the part kind of budding up against the green, that the FCC had found that there was another company that was providing service to most of those locations. So they were technically not unserved. So those were kind of disqualified. And then there were some other areas that, I believe it's Newberry Electric that won some of the other areas through a state grant, which was part of the ARPA funding, which was separate from ARDOF. So we looked at it as, you know, why spend, you know, FCC money? And why spend, have, you know, Newberry building and using the ARPA money?
allocated to give up those areas since there was going to be other providers building in it, because really, the purpose was to build out to all the unserved areas. And to have two providers building in one area, it, it would give us better use of our workforce to focus in the areas that were unserved and let the other providers that were building in the areas that they had bid on build in those areas, so that we weren't having duplicate funding, duplicate companies building in the same areas. So, this way, more of the county members and residents could have, you know, broadband in their areas altogether. So, we are start, planning on starting construction probably middle to the end of next year. We're still in our engineering and planning phase. Once we get through with that, the construction portion for the six hundred and some odd locations that we have should not take very long to get done, should only be a couple of months to get that built completed. So, hopefully, we could have this either built by the end of next year or early into 2024. And I know there's a lot of folks that would like it sooner. The, the issue with that is, you know, we're, we're building all over South Carolina. We're providing service to about eighty thousand unserved homes in the state of South Carolina, which is, is a great thing. I'm, I'm really excited to be part of this, because every place that we're building, people constantly are coming out of their homes and saying, thank God that you're here, we're finally getting internet, because as the Senator had alluded to, you know, there were folks during the pandemic that just could not do telemedicine, couldn't do work from home, couldn't do the, the homeschooling and things like that. So, it's, it's a, it's a great program that the FCC, you know, provided funding for us. And, you know, we're, we're committed to getting this built as quickly as possible. That schedule for middle of next year or end of next year into 2024 could change. Everything is fluid depending on workforce, materials, things like that. And, you know, we're definitely committed to getting it, getting it done as quickly as possible. And if we can accelerate that schedule, we certainly will. Any questions for Joe or myself, from any of the council members?
You said, basically said that, that y'all dropped a certain number?
We did. When the FCC originally awarded charter with that four thousand or so, yeah, and Joe, that'll be good to show that. So, originally, we were awarded all of those areas. But then, as Joe said, there was one area, which is the, the part, kind of budding up against the green, that the FCC had found that there was another company that was providing service to most of those locations. So, they were technically not unserved. So, those were kind of disqualified. And then there were some other areas that, I believe it's Newberry Electric that, that won some of the other areas through a state grant, which was part of the ARPA funding, which was separate from ARDOF. So, we looked at it as, you know, why spend, you know, FCC money and why spend, have, you know, Newberry building and using the ARPA money all in the same area when we could turn that money back into the FCC and they could possibly refund it and reallocate it somewhere else to build other unserved or underserved areas? So, all the residents are still getting built to. It's just not all of it's going to be charter. Now, some of it's going to be the Newberry Electric, which, you know, both, both provide excellent service. So, everybody's, you know, getting what they want, and, you know, we're, we're bringing this to the residents, which, like I said, that's, that's the whole, the whole meat of the whole thing is we need to get broadband out to these residents that didn't have it.
To piggyback on top of that, too, as the Senator alluded earlier, the General Assembly did put substantial amount of money towards broadband, and I think it was two hundred and fourteen million total in this last session, and a hundred and eighty million of that's going to be used in the current ORS program right now, and applications will be due at the end of August. I think they're requiring construction to be completed by the end of 2024 in that program, which, to Rich's earlier point, kind of aligns with our same schedule for the ARDOF that remains in the county.
And how are you reaching the residents?
With fiber, fiber to the home.
No, I was talking about, you said they had to do something on the internet to, in order to get the funds?
No, we're going to be building to those. We've committed to the federal government. We're going to build regardless. You may be thinking about, I know the state has a survey that, I need internet survey, which is what ORS uses to kind of crowdsource.
Right.
You know, because they have, we submit our, our data to the state as well, and that's what builds their eligibility map, where they find the need, and then they use that I need internet survey to kind of confirm that information as well. And so, we, we work with the state to try to make sure they have our most accurate information and vice versa, to make sure we're all, I like to say broadband's a team sport. And so, we're doing our part to help with the issue.
My concern, I want to make sure that, that, that all the areas that aren't being served will pretty much get served now.
That's the goal, you know? And between the federal money, the state money, some places, local money, all of this, this pandemic funds are really helping with it. I did, to your point, though, because affordability is another issue.
Right.
And I did want to note that we do have a low-income product. It's called, we have what's called Spectrum Internet Assist, which means if there's a child that's on free or reduced lunch, or an elderly individual that's on SSI, if they're eligible for those programs, they're eligible for our low-income package, which, right now, we have something that's called Spectrum One Hundred, which is going to be a one hundred meg. And if they're eligible for our program, we are a part of the FCC's ACP, which is the Affordable Connectivity Plan, which means if they call into the FCC, they will pay that, that monthly bill for them. I think it's up to fifty dollars a month, which ours is forty-nine ninety-nine. So, they're eligible for those programs, they're eligible for our low-income hundred meg offering.
To follow up on what Travis is saying, and I don't, it's not your responsibility, but we need some group or, or some entity, and I don't know if it's within our own administration, but we need to define after Western Carolina and the city, Spectrum and your sections of the county, the co-op and your sections of the county, we need to know what's left.
Right.
You know, we need to know what, who's not being served, and then we need to take some measures to make sure that we have some program by, by some company to serve those people that, and...
We, we as far as Carolina connects, have got a pretty decent map showing the Newberry County.
So, we need an overlap of your map, an overlap of Western...
Western Carolina.
Carolina and the city, an overlap of your map and see who's left.
We've probably got that. I had to look at it.
I think ORS, the state, has an overlap.
I was going to say, they have excellent maps. They have a statewide map, and then they have an individual county map where they show exactly, based on all of their information. And they, they pull from the FCC, they pull straight from providers, and then they use their I need internet survey to, to confirm all of it. They have a specific map for each county. So, I, I would look to see what the Newberry one from ORS looks like, because their data is very good.
If you want to take the lead on that, that's great.
Yes, sir.
And report back through our administration and let us know, because it's very important, I think, for us to make sure eventually that everybody in our county gets served.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
And I'm pretty sure that's going to be a topic at the SCAC meeting next, well, two weeks from now.
Also, if we know what's coming to each area, we can direct people...
Which way to go.
Which way to go.
Absolutely.
Because we get calls about it, you know?
And then, once the service is built, we'd, we'd like to work with you guys to get the word out, because a lot of times, folks don't know that there's service available. And the best way to do it is through those local community anchor points, churches, schools, get the word out, especially about the affordable, affordable programs, too. Because a lot of folks, even though the service is there, but they just assume that they can't afford it, so they don't even look into it. So, we'll be happy to work with you guys and your social media outlets and those community anchor institutions to get the word out as well.
Okay. That sounds great.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Our final public appearance of the evening is Ms. Debbie Peak, Human Resources Director, who is going to unveil the recruitment slogan.
We really appreciate you all celebrating our first slogan contest of employees. We hope we can do a lot more of this in the future. I'd like to bring Melinda along. We had fourteen submissions, and they were very good. Melinda stood out, and her slogan, do you want to tell me what it was originally?
Dreams and teams work in Newberry, together in Newberry County.
And from that, we had to make it just a little bit shorter, because we're doing a QR code to put out our signature block. It'll take employee, or candidates, straight to our jobs. So, we made it into dreams and teams together for Newberry County. And so, I want to award Melinda with a Starbucks card. Okay? Thank you.
You can see that QR code in my signature line. When you get emails from me, it's present there, and the slogan is along with the QR code. It's up on Debbie's website, webpage, and it'll be rolled out in other literature and materials as Debbie continues to do recruitment for the county. Mr. Chairman, I do have one more announcement.
Okay.
If I could introduce Sarah Lynn to County Council.
Okay.
I wanted to do it last meeting, and it ended up going real late, and I wasn't able to do it during my comments. So, if we could, if Sarah Lynn, if you come up to the podium, Sarah Lynn comes to Newberry County with a master's degree in public administration from Augusta University and a bachelor's degree from the University of South Carolina in history. She's spent three years as the Assistant to the Town Administrator for the town of Blythewood, South Carolina, as they've continued to experience extraordinary growth and, and exciting things happening there. She also served as an Assistant to the Intern Planning Director for the City of North Augusta. She was a graduate assistant during her graduate studies and did an internship with the City of North Augusta. So, she's accumulated in her short career quite a good bit of local government work, and we are absolutely thrilled she's joined Newberry. So, this is Sarah Lynn, and most of you have already met her, but just in case you haven't, she's my assistant. She'll be around helping with all kinds of special projects and scheduling, and so you'll be interacting with her quite a bit. Thank you.
Item number three on our agenda is a request of approval to move forward with an RFP for a Grant Writer Consultant.
So, this has been discussed a little bit in a couple committees, but essentially, council approved a full-time employee position for Grant Writer. The salary budgeted, including fringe, is somewhere around ninety-four, ninety-six thousand dollars. Staff, including Crystal from Procurement, Tommy from Public Safety, and Mike from Public Works, we met with a couple of grant consulting companies, just trying to gather information to see what was on the market and what was available. And staff is, we have a consensus agreement that this is probably the best move as an alternative to a full-time employee for a variety of reasons that was discussed at committee. The risk of recruiting, the length of recruiting an employee, the risk of whether or not they're going to stay and be successful versus hiring a consultant that has a team available to them and a track record, et cetera, et cetera. One, one of the questions I heard was, what about the fire chiefs and some of the smaller grants? And the good news is Tommy's been approved for an emergency services coordinator position, and we believe that person will be able to provide some assistance for those smaller grants. But this would chase some big fish and some bigger federal grants for transportation, economic development, Public Works for public safety issues, as well as parks and trails, workforce development is, there's a ton of money coming down from the federal government for workforce development. So, we want to get positioned for Newberry County to take advantage of that. And we've already worked on the RFP, so we're just requesting approval from council to go ahead through the RFP process. Doesn't, you don't, you're not committing to anything tonight. We'll have to come back and present to you the staff's recommended consultant, and at that time, the funds would be shifted from a full-time employee to a contract for a consultant, if that's the best option for the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the presentation. Is there a motion of council regarding this information as to move forward or not with this proposal?
I make a motion to move forward with the RFP with the understanding that, you know, until we see what's available, we won't be able to make a wise decision whether we go with a full-time employee or the other option.
Okay. There is a motion to pursue the RFP?
Yes, sir.
There is a second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion?
I just want to reiterate something that was discussed when, when this came before the executive committee. One of the things that I, I think that's going to really weigh heavily on whether or not we choose this direction or a full-time employee is the experience and knowledge of a contract consultant that would be able to come in and be able to produce work right away. And the other thing is metrics, that we have a good, reasonable way of measuring the performance of that contractor and make sure that they're providing us a service that we would want to continue with. Of course, also, in a contract like this, you would also have the option to, if this was unsuccessful, if that's the direction we chose to, we could always go back into the direction of a full-time hire. So, those are my comments, I think, that came up in our executive committee.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all of those in favor of pursuing an RFP, by show of hands? All those opposed, by show of hands? It carries five to, I don't think I raised my hand, five to two, with Mr. Scurry, Reverend Scurry and Mr. Livingston voting no. Item number four on our agenda is ordinance number oh-five sixteen twenty twenty-two, an ordinance establishing procedures and requirements for entering into development agreements in Newberry County. This is their second reading. Are there any changes to that?
No, sir.
Is there a motion by council? This be second reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Reader. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, by show of hands? Opposed likewise? Motion carries unanimously. Item number five on the agenda is ordinance number oh-six nineteen twenty-two, an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number twelve twenty-four oh-one is revised and amended by zoning ordinance number six dash one-one dash one-six and codified in chapter one-five-three of Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning classifications and districts, so is the rezon one real estate parcel totaling thirty-eight, seven, three and eighty-seven hundreds, three-point-eight-seven acres designated as TMS one, number twenty-eight-two-eight dash one dash one dash six, from R-two rural to G C general commercial. This is our second reading after I finally got that out. Is there any changes since the last reading?
Any complaints?
Any, any complaints, anything? Public hearings when it's actually posted, is that correct? Is there a motion related to this being second reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader. Is there a discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is ordinance number oh-seven dash two-zero dash two-zero-two-two, which is an ordinance for the purpose of leasing out certain county fairground property. This is the first reading. Who is prepared for the brief? Okay?
I will, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the ordinance and exhibit for first reading. We discussed this a little bit in executive session and with committee, but there's two barns at the old fairgrounds. We have an industry that is in need of some warehouse space for, for a temporary time, for up to two years, maybe a little bit longer than two years. And we've met out there with them a couple times, and they have indicated it will work for them, and we've negotiated the terms. The, the lease itself is not in your packet tonight, but we do intend to have it in form by second reading. It's basically in legal, getting, getting reviewed, and, but the basic terms are forty-five-hundred dollars a month for eighteen hun, eighteen months, plus a six-month extension, which would yield, I believe, a hundred and seven thousand dollars. The improvements needed to the barn, for, for both barns, not just the front barn, but the structural improvements to the back barn, we've got a rough estimate. It has to go out to bids, so we don't know the exact number, but we've got a rough estimate of about seventy-five thousand dollars. So, this will enable us to get those improvements done and put some use to that front barn, and we'll work with the Historical Society to get their stuff and storage to the back barn, so it won't have any adverse impact on them. And so, we're requesting first reading, approval for first reading tonight.
Okay. There are motion that this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Livingston, second by Reverend Scurry. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven on our agenda is discuss, discussion and approval of RFP for external audit services. The lovely Ms. Crystal, order.
Thank you. We solicited proposals and received one. We solicited on July the seventh, and the response from Malden and Jenkins was the only one that we received. This is for the external audit. Rishan and Zostiga would still perform the internal audit. Their duty, as I understand it, would be to come in and clean up the books prior to doing the external audit. The amount is over-budgeted, I believe. We probably could scale down the number of hours that we have them do the audit, but it could certainly go over as well. The amount for the internal audit is thirty thousand dollars. The amount for the external audit, we have budgeted forty-one thousand dollars. So, that's why it's sort of a discussion, because it's lacking funding.
And so, they were over by eleven thousand?
About eleven thousand dollars.
Okay.
Sorry, Crystal, the, the Malden and Jenkins proposal was for seventy thousand dollars.
That's right.
And we have budgeted forty-one thousand.
Oh, okay.
However, however, we, we are gonna negotiate, we, we think their hours are probably excessive, and we think we can get that number down, but probably not down to the budgeted amount.
I did reach out to a couple of firms that are on state contract, which I did not know there was such thing for state contract auditors, but this late in the game, they are booked up to perform the audit for the past fiscal year. They could not accommodate us to get it done in the timeframe that we need to have it done.
Maybe that's a resource we might be able to use next year.
Exactly. There's three firms on state contract that perform audits. That are just for municipalities, local government.
What are the comments or recommendations of council?
What are the options?
I, I, I'm thinking out, I'm thinking out loud is, I'd like for, to go back to negotiations and come back with a number rather than approving it tonight, so that we can talk in factual instead of, we think they'll come down, but they may say that's our number and... instead of, we think they'll come down, but they may say that's our number and, yeah. Sometimes when people have you over a barrel, they'll take advantage of you, so that'd be my thought, just go back and see what they will negotiate to. But y'all can say otherwise if you would like to.
I tend to concur.
Now, were we budgeted for the internal and the external audit?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Are we saving any on the internal?
We might save some in the future, but right now he's working with the dealings we're having with our software system.
Right.
So that's taking some extra.
Okay.
Okay.
I think this is just an indication of a problem we've already talked about at length earlier.
Is there a motion that we ask them to engage in conversation?
That's not, we're already doing it. We're, we're already engaging in that negotiation.
And we'll take this as a simple discussion, and that's our direction forward.
Okay.
Item number eight on the agenda is an executive session, code section thirty, dash, four, dash, seventy, subsection A of the Code of Laws of South Carolina is amended nineteen seventy-six. There'll be three purposes for our executive session. The first is the discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body. However, if an adversary hearing involving the employee or client is held, the employer or client has the right to demand the hearing be conducted publicly. Nothing contained in this item shall prevent the public body in its discretion from deleting the names of other employees or clients whose records are submitted for use at the hearing. The second purpose of our stated executive session would be discussion of negotiations instant to proposed contractual arrangements and the proposed sale or purchase of property, the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim, or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or position of the public agency in other adversary situations, including assertion against the agency of a claim. Final purpose of our executive session would be discussions of matters related to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. Is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands? Opposed likewise? The motion carries unanimously, and we move into executive session.
All right, is there a motion that we come out of executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Airwood, second by Mr. Shealy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. New Bay County Council met in executive session for the reasons mentioned. Prior to the meet, going into executive session, no action was taken. Item agenda number nine is the adoption of the consent agenda. New Bay County Council meeting of July 6th. Is there a motion that we adopt the consent agenda? Motion by Reverend Scurry. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Airwood. Is there a discussion?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Under item 13 in the CPST discussion, it talks about Theo Williams. And that's not our attorney. So we just need to make that correction.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry. Let me go back. Reverend Scurry, would you amend your motion with that change to the minutes?
That's a necessary correction.
Second, will that change to the minutes? Still seconded. Is there any other discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Are there appointments? Hearing none. No one had signed up for public comments and nobody still here. Pat, we're good. We're glad to have you back with us. We missed you holding down your chair back there, buddy. Comments from the county administrator? Comments from council or requests or comments from council? Mr. Shealy?
No comment.
Mr. Livingston?
I don't think there's any value in any.
Ms. Airwood?
No comment.
Mr. Hip?
None.
Mr. Reader?
No comment.
Reverend Scurry?
No comments, but I do press council for their prayers. I go to surgery tomorrow at 11 o'clock. I'd like them to keep me in your prayers.
We certainly will be keeping you in our prayers as you go forward. Future meetings, economic development on August 15th, county council meeting on August 17th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Ms. Airwood. All in favor by show of hands. We stand adjourned.